Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
All right, it's so great to see everyone out tonight. And it is nighttime, Commissioner Hambrick. At this time, the Clayton County Board of Commissioners meeting is now called to order. The date is November 18th, 2025, and the time is 6:00 PM. Would you please stand at this time? Well, I'll do roll call, I'm sorry, before we stand. Next, we have roll call, District 1. Y'all ready, huh? Look, hold up, hold up, hold up. All right, District 1.
Here.
District 3.
Present.
District 2.
Present.
And District 4. All right, next, our invocation tonight will be done by Senior Pastor T. Lynn Oliver of the New Testament Gospel Church in Rex, Georgia. She will come up and do our invocation, and thereafter, we will have our pledge of allegiance to the flag. Would you please stand?
So, just one minor change. Doctor Pastor Lynn T. Oliver is running a tad bit late, so we have Associate Pastor Denise Baker in her stead.
And thank you for coming out tonight.
Most certainly. You're welcome. Gracious Almighty God and King, we do bless and magnify you. We look to you, Lord God, for everything that is needed and necessary for godliness and for health. Father, we appreciate that you are God and that you alone know all of the desires of our hearts. God, we are looking at this agenda, and we present this agenda before you, and we ask, God, that you will move in such a way, Lord God, that it bless the people of God, that it bless your people that are here, oh God, and that it stands to do what's right for your people, Lord, and we give you praise, glory, and honor in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. You may be seated. All right, at this time, board members, are there any items that you would like to move to the regular agenda? Any items?
Yes.
All right, Commissioner Hambrick?
Number... Ooh. Number 20? And I have a question on 19.
Yeah, yeah. So, I guess, should we move it up? When we move it?
Well, it's not so much for Mr. Mottaco as it is for finance. So, I can wait for that. I don't have to pull it out for that.
So, 19, 20, and 21. All right. Any other board members have any items that they would like to move to the regular agenda?
Yes, I'd like to move item 9 to the regular agenda.
All right. Madam Clerk, you have the additions to the regular agenda, 9, 19, 20, and 21?
Clear.
All right, any other board members?
Yes, I was actually going to table item number 20 until December 2nd meeting, but if you would like to keep that on the regular agenda, that's fine, but I had intentions to table that until December 2nd.
So, you want to make a motion to table it?
Yes.
Can I get a second on that motion?
Second.
All right, any other discussion at this time? Are you ready for the vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Item 20 is tabled until the next meeting. All right, any other items? Seeing 9, we will now proceed to adopt the agenda. At this time, I need a motion to adopt the agenda. So moved. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion at this time? Are you ready for the vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion carries. Thank you. All right, at this time, item 5, presentations and proclamations. We have none at this time. We will now move on to public comment. The clerk will now read the rules for public comment, but before we get started, are there any public officials in our audience today? I know I see Mr. Cobb, who's a frequent visitor. Let's give him a round of applause. Thank you for coming out from Riverdale. Are there any other visitors in the... I'm sorry, any other public officials in the audience tonight?
You got the DA.
All right, where's the district attorney? And we have Tasha Moser, our district attorney, who's also here. Thank you. All right, next, we will move on to public comment. Madam Clerk, will you read the rules for public comment?
Citizens will be given a three-minute maximum time limit to speak before the Board of Commissioners. Please note that all public comments must be limited to matters on the agenda or over matters which the governing body has jurisdiction. Speakers must maintain a decorous demeanor and refrain from personal attacks upon board members, shouting, and using obscene language. Following 30 minutes of hearing from the public, the Board of Commissioners will allow the remainder of citizens who have signed up to be heard at the next Tuesday business meeting, and please speak clearly when stating your name and residence. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, next on the agenda, well, first on the agenda, we will go back to our November 4th, 2025, regular agenda meeting, excuse me, regular business meeting, and we'll start with Ms. Deborah Yabara. Are you present tonight? Next will be Peter Friedrich. Are you present tonight? All right, next, we will go on with our public comment for tonight, and first on the agenda will be Dr. Henry Anderson.
Henry Anderson, District 3 constituent and resident, unincorporated Clayton County, Hampton, Georgia. Good evening.
Good.
I'm going to comment, take a break from the praise that I've started on, all of you as our Clayton County Board of Commissioners, and just give a comment on resolution 2025-251 concerning you, Madam Chairwoman, Mrs. Dr. Lee Anderson-Henry. The only thing that I'm just saying is that it is very troubling when I see notice of possible violations and "may." That means it either is or it isn't. I would expect that if a resolution like this had come before you, it would be definitive, not possible. In my understanding, and I respect Madam Vice Chair, Commissioner Ms. Reeves, your right to, and any commission to bring anything on the agenda. I would have thought something like this would probably be discussed in executive session when it's "may" or "possible," because I will give all of you, I will say this to all of you, you all, because it's on this agenda and before the people, you on display now. So evaluations, you people will see. So I would just say that it is my hope when it's stated the reasons why, because it's not stated in the agenda, and of course, with the agenda packet, you all don't talk about the resolutions like you used to. So I would just hope that it's in order, that you get it all out, and Madam Vice Chair, I will say you, as Chairwoman, you are in a power, you're in a powerful position of power, authority, and command, that your fellow commissioners say their piece, because you control the agenda, and then I would just say rebut, or give your point of rebuttal. It doesn't have to be with all of you all, any type of discord, because you have brought it out. You have brought it out. That's all I'm just saying, because it was a "may," and it was a "no," it was "possible." So that's all that I say, just know that everybody's watching, and you, I hope everybody states, will be statesman-like, because you show the citizens, you will show you will be the evaluation, because they will see how you all interact on this resolution. So, that's it. So, it is my hope that you will let your best selves, all of you show your best selves, your very best of you, and I just hope that it all comes out, it is done and dealt with, and it can move forward, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Next will be Denise Baker.
She provided the invocation.
Did you sign in by mistake? Okay, you're fine. Thank you. No problem. All right, next will be Tracy Morrow.
How many minutes do we have for this, and how many minutes do we have when we talk about the issue, something that's coming up, about our subdivision?
So that will be towards the end, and so this is three minutes. So I would just say, just, well, you can wait till we get into, when we start talking about zoning. You can wait until we start talking about zoning, and then come up if there's time allotted then, and right now, but it's public comment right now.
Is there so many minutes?
It's, well, it just depends on whoever is, whoever comes up, based on those minutes, if they ask for a certain amount of minutes, they ask for five minutes, and they come up and talk the whole five minutes, the people that are for won't be able to come up, but you know, the people who are opposed will. So you can, you can either... Did you want to speak now? Well, this is basically public comment, so I would just say, hold it until then. All right. All right, next will be David Hamrick.
Madam Clerk, Commissioners, David Hamrick, District 3. Madam Chairwoman, if I may, point of privilege for 30 seconds to commend the Clayton County Water Authority.
Sorry, go ahead. Go ahead.
You know, come up here and criticize, but I want to commend and say thank you to Clayton County Water Authority for fixing a broken pipe in our Park Ridge subdivision. They repaired it, did a fantastic job, and you could tell that they took pride in their work, because the patch is level, smooth, and when transitioned from the old to the new asphalt, you cannot tell the difference. It's not like riding on a washboard. So I want to commend and say thank you to the Clayton County Water Authority for the crew they sent over to Park Ridge Drive to fix that water leak.
Thank you, Ms. Baker.
You know, over a year ago, I spoke of the economy, being in a post-COVID economy. Back then, the Biden administration gave out timetables and dates for COVID-area subsidies to expire. News stations and newspapers gave interviews and information out to the public. I use the time to repeat the words from Tupac Shakur. I don't know if y'all have ever heard of the fellow. But Tupac was quoted as saying, "So as you depend upon the government to feed you, so can they starve you." These words came true in November, when the SNAP program stopped. The sad part, nobody listened, nobody heard, and unfortunately, statistically, approximately 28% to 34% will not change. Our food pantry report from October of 2025, we served 661 households, amounting to 2,323 people. Of those, 782 were children, 443 were over 65. Roughly 15,000 pounds of food was given out in eight hours, two hours every Friday, valued at over $30,616. You know, ladies and gentlemen, all this stuff has been in the news and been available for years. It's not going to change. Anybody in government knows that this money is drying up and it's going away. It's not coming back. So we must look into our spending habits, and I do understand, as the father of a son who had Down's Syndrome, who was born premature, that accidents, catastrophic injuries, and such like that, medical bills happen, but we should do everything we can to mitigate those circumstances. I worked two jobs seven days a week, because I had two kids, a mortgage, and a wife. I'm not saying everybody can do that. I know there's exceptions to the rule. And now we're talking about the housing slowdown I spoke of. The situation's gotten worse, and I'll have to bring this up. Thank you. Y'all have a great Thanksgiving, and we'll see you later.
Thank you, Ms. Hamrick. Bye-bye. Next is Mr. Mickey Garber.
Officer, would you please distribute these to the Commissioners? And they don't have to return it or anything? They can have more than one. Thank you, Officer. Madam Chair, excuse me, Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, unincorporated Rex, Georgia. Madam Chair, members of the board, I distributed this Atlanta Business Journal Chronicle to you, because I find, I subscribe to this magazine, and I find a lot of important things happening in all the other counties except Clayton County. Other counties are mentioned in this magazine, except Clayton County. Other than one, of which I clapped about, David Hamrick mentioned Clayton County Water Authority, and they were mentioned as a positive in this magazine. Now, let me give you another positive coming from Clayton County that's mentioned in this magazine, and it's the most admired CEOs of Atlanta. And I know him as Colonel Keith Horton. He is now known as Dr. Keith Horton. And he's from Clayton County, and I want him recognized as one of the great leaders of our county, and he is president and CEO of Christian City. Let me just give you a little bio here. I only have a minute and 28 seconds. Before joining Christian City in 2019, Horton also served as Deputy Director of then Commissioner of Georgia Department of Human Services, followed by two years of Assistant Commissioner of the Department of Juvenile Services, Juvenile Justice. While Horton was directing the state's Child Support Service, the agency was named the 2010 Most Improved Child Support Agency and the 2012 Most Outstanding Child Support Agency by the National Association of Child Support Enforcement Agencies. He also, as DHS Commissioner, launched a 24/7 virtual call center for child welfare. During his time at Christian City, Horton has increased the number of children and family programs serviced on the organization's 500-acre campus that includes a children's village and assisted living facility, a skilled nursing facility, and senior adult community of approximately 1,100 residents. It has more, but my time is running out, and I thank you for this opportunity in recognizing Dr. Keith Horton from Clayton County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garber. Next will be Ms. Judith Cotton.
Good evening. Judith Cotton, unincorporated Jonesboro, Georgia, District 4. Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners. I'm here as a member of the Veterans Advisory Board, Clayton County Veterans Advisory Board, a board that represents you all, and I'm here because we need money. We need to have a line item. We need some money, because every time we give an event, we have to come out of our pocket, which as a veteran, retired veteran, I don't really mind, but if we are representing you, why can't we have money come from you all to support our events? We need to celebrate, appreciate our veterans. We have about 20,000 veterans in Clayton County, and we have served our country, protected you, defended you, so why can't you all give us a few dollars so that we could celebrate, appreciate them? Give them a one-stop shop, a resource center, so that they can come to, so they can get their mental health, their, you know, everything that they need, because we have PTSD, including me. So you know, we need help. So why can't we just do that? Get some money for Veterans Treat... I'm not the Veterans Treatment Court, I'm on that too. Veterans Advisory Board, so we could help our veterans. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baker.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Next is Maurice Starks.
I'm going to speak when the zoning calls.
Okay, thank you. Next is Vicky Stewart.
I'd like to speak when it's on.
Next is Carlos Bonilla.
I'm going to see zoning.
And I have also, is this, is this Candler or Charles? Charles Devonsky? Devon, okay, Devonshire, okay.
Back into zoning, please.
Okay, all right. Lisa Walls?
Zoning.
Okay. And Laurinville Anderson?
It's like zoning.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight for public comment. Your comments were duly noted, and thank you so much again, one more time, for all of your comments. We will take them into consideration as a board, and we will get some answers back to you, too, also, Ms. Cotton, okay, about the veterans. Thank you. All right, at this time, we're going to move on from public comment, and at this time, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
All right, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, is there any discussion at this time? Are you ready for the vote?
A question.
Yes. Commissioner Hamrick?
Yes, on one of the items regarding the Transportation and Development, the grant, and all, I just want to know about the funding.
All right, Ms. Mottaco?
The local maintenance improvement grant?
Yes, the match.
The match is budgeted in the SPOS program.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other discussion at this time? All right, are you ready for the vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Next, we will move to the regular agenda, and we will start with item 9. Good evening, Ms. Rogers.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. Tonight, I'm presenting to you a recommendation for award. This is for RFP 25-156. It is for Economic Development Authority Advisory Support Service. It is an annual contract on behalf of the Community and Economic Development Department. The recommendation is to award to the responsive and responsible proponent, whose proposal is determined to be the most advantageous and lowest cost, meeting the specifications of the RFP. The vendor is Pond &amp; Company. They're located in Peachtree Corners, Georgia. The annual cost for the contract is $174,500. This is for an initial one-year, and this is also a renewal with two one-year renewals, which makes the total amount of the contract $523,500. Funding is available through the county's general fund. For your reference, the evaluation tabulation, summary, as well as the department's recommendation, memo, along with the agreement, are all attached. The request is for you to approve the recommendation, authorize the Chairwoman or her designee to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract, as well as authorize the interim Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget accordingly.
All right, is there any more discussion at this time? Does anyone have any other questions?
Yes, Director Rogers.
Commissioner Reeves?
And this, and this might be an operations question, or it might be a question for Director Ajike, and I posed this question before around when the board is voting on an RFP. I know that once the RFP comes to the procurement office, the board has no input. However, I'm just, I'm curious, especially since economic development and hiring an economic development contractor is a part of one of the key pillars for Clayton County and is driving the policy about what the county will look like for the next five, 10 years, you know, was the board included in the discussion before the scope of services went to procurement?
Mr. Ajike, will you come up, please?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, good evening. I believe that the county's procurement regulations guides what they do. So I do, in my experience, I'll let Ms. Rogers address it, I don't think that when a bid is put out in the county for procurement, that the Commissioners get involved.
Oh, no, not during the procurement process, but before, when I'm not, was it your department that created the scope of services that were listed in the RFP? You know, because this is a policy discussion about what the economic development for Clayton County is going to look like, and so I'm just trying to get a better understanding of at what point was the Board of Commissioners involved in what that scope of services looked like.
CEO, are you still...
Yes, I can.
CEO of Stanford, please approach.
Good evening, board. Commissioner Reeves, your question is poignant. So usually what we do, if there's an RFP that goes out, if we're extrapolating information either from our strategic plan or a policy direction, that information is noted and is part of the RFP. It's not necessarily extrapolating language specifically from the strategic plan, but it does provide what we deem as representative of what the board's policy work with.
Bless you.
All right, thank you.
All right, board members, is there any other discussion at this time? All right, at this time, can I get a motion for recommendation for the RFP, for the recommendation for award for the RFP 25-156?
So moved.
Second.
All right, is there any more discussion? Are you ready for the vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion carries. Thank you. Next will be item 19, Resolution 2025-248. No, no, no.
Item 19?
I thought you were...
No, the question already.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know, was you already had your question answered on that record.
Okay, so you're good, okay, so we already got that one. Good. All right, next will be item 21, and that will be ordinance 2025-250.
Good evening. Ordinance 2025-250 is an ordinance to amend the code of Clayton County, Georgia, as amended, specifically Chapter 94, Traffic and Vehicles, to add a new Article 6 entitled Traffic Calming Measures to repeal any and all conflicting laws, ordinances, rules, regulations, and rules and regulations, ordinances, resolutions, rules and regulations, to provide for severability to provide an effective date of this ordinance or for other purposes.
All right, all right, board members, is there any discussion? Do you have any questions at this time? Not discussion? All right. Commissioner Hamrick?
I do.
Ms. Mottaco? Ms. Mottaco, will you please come up?
Now, I know we've been discussing, you know, the different traffic calming devices and all, but now, does this bypass the community involvement as far as community meetings and all, or what stage is this? Is this saying that we're doing it?
This creates a traffic calming ordinance, a program. So yes, ma'am, you're setting the stage to offer the community the ability to have traffic calming devices in their neighborhood. The community input is a part of the process. There's, it's proposed as two stages, an initial stage to show interest in the community. Once that is accomplished through a petition process, and then it comes to our department, then that's when we meet with the community and propose a plan on how we would implement the traffic calming to achieve goals of reducing the speed in the neighborhood. That could be one meeting, it could be several meetings, depends on the interaction between transportation... between, um, transportation staff and the community.
Okay, um, I know with the red light, not red light, I'm sorry, with the lighting in the communities, in the residential areas, the streetlights and all, and there's a percentage as far as what the, uh, citizens pay, then there's a, a portion that the county pays. Now, did we decide on what the percentage would be?
Yes, ma'am. The, the streetlights are based off of what the costs are for the county to pay for the energy and maintenance from mainly Georgia Power.
Okay.
And this is loosely modeled after that in a petition process. Um, it is set up, um, proposed in this for two aspects of cost. One aspect is similar to the streetlights, an annual fee, um, will be charged, and it's proposed based off of the input from the board members at fifty dollars a year per parcel. And then there's another aspect of it, and that would be the capital cost, um, for whatever the calming devices and how many there are to install in the neighborhood, that, um, the proposal that is written into the ordinance is the neighborhood, the community would be responsible for thirty percent of that capital cost, and then the county would pay seventy percent of that capital cost.
Okay, so we, we decided on that?
That was based off of input from the board members, yes, ma'am. It, it wasn't a binding vote, it was through various work sessions. The, the vote, um, is, would be in support of this ordinance, or you can amend and change it.
What, um, one other thing, uh, the fifty dollars, uh, for the fee, that, that fee schedule will come back to this board at a later time, because we want to make sure that whatever the cost is, actually approximate what the cost would be to maintain the, um, the actual traffic calming device. So, you'll likely get something later on, given a fee schedule that be, will be amended from time to time, based on what the actual cost will be, so that we don't want to, um, get any challenges on whether we're tack, you know, taxing people. So, really, we're just doing a, um, a cost of what the actual maintenance will be, and that will fluctuate based on what the actual tra- traffic calming device is.
Okay, so will that include, uh, the portions, the thirty percent and seventy percent, or is that set?
That'll be, that's set now, but the, the ongoing maintenance cost will be, come back to this board at a later time for adoption.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? All right. At this time, I need a motion for ordinance Twenty-Twenty-Five dash two five zero.
So moved.
I'll second.
All right. Any more discussion?
Was that a motion to adopt?
To approve, yes.
To approve, I'm sorry. Um, to, or to adopt, I'm sorry, um, not approve, to adopt, uh, ordinance Twenty-Twenty-Five dash two five zero. I have, um, a motion and a second on the floor at this time. Any more discussion? All right. Are you ready for the vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion carries. All right, next, we will go to item twenty-two, Board Appointment, Clayton County Public Facilities Authority. Hackwin Devoe resigned from the Clayton County Public Facilities Authority. He was appointed in Twenty-Twenty-Five. The existing term is for two years and will expire in Twenty-Twenty-Six. Vice Chair Reeves, what's your pleasure?
I would like to nominate Ramona Bivens for that appointment.
All right, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion at this time? Are you ready for the vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion carries. Next, item twenty-three, Board Appointment to the Martyr's Citizens Advisory Board. Ashonda Ross's term on the Martyr's Citizens Advisory Board expired on April sixth, Twenty-Twenty-Five. The new term is for a two-year term, expiring on April sixth, Twenty-Twenty-Six. Vice Chair Reeves, what's your pleasure?
I would like to appoint Ms. Tanisha Gaden of Ellenwood.
All right, and do we have a second on that?
Second.
All right, is there any discussion at this time? Are you ready for the vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstent, any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion carries. Next is ordinance Twenty-Twenty-Five dash two forty-three.
Uh, ordinance Twenty-Twenty-Five two forty-three is an ordinance to amend the Code of Clayton County, Georgia, as amended, specifically to amend Part One, Article Four, Civil Service System, to add department directors and department heads back into the civil service system, to repeal any and all conflicting laws, ordinances, resolutions, rules and regulations, to provide for severability, to provide us an effective date of this ordinance and for other purposes. And just for the record, this is the second read of this, and should it pass, the effective date will be tomorrow.
All right. Board members, is there any questions at this time? All right. All right, at this time, can I get a motion to approve ordinance Twenty-Twenty-Five dash two four three?
So moved.
All right, I'll second the motion. Is there any more discussion? Are you ready for the vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion carries. Next is item Twenty-Twenty, excuse, Twenty-five, Resolution Twenty-Twenty-Five dash two five one. At this time, I need a motion.
Um, well...
Do you want to go through it? Okay.
Well, I'm just going to read it for the...
Okay.
Resolution Twenty-Twenty-Five two fifty-one is a resolution of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, to put Chairwoman Dr. Elika Anderson Henry on notice of her possible violations of the Code of Conduct of Board of Commissioners, to provide an effective date of this resolution for other purposes.
All right. Any questions at this time?
Yes, Attorney Reed, I would like for you to read Resolution Twenty-Twenty, Twenty-Twenty-Five dash two five one, um, in full. Can you read the entire resolution?
Okay. Um, whereas, the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, the Board, is the governing authority of Clayton County and shall exercise the powers, duties, and responsibilities here invested and imposed upon said officers as set forth in Section two dash one of the Code of Clayton County, the Code. And whereas under Section two dash seven of the Code, the Chair of the Board is the administrative and executive official of the Board, and is required to carry out and administer the policies set by the Board. And whereas on November second, Twenty-Twenty-One through Ordinance Twenty-Twenty-One to Twenty-Six, the Board adopted Section two dash thirty-seven, to set a Code of Conduct for which each member of the Board agreed that he or she will operate. And whereas, Section two dash thirty-seven dash O-two relates to the conduct of each Commissioner, as it relates to governance structure. And whereas, Section two dash thirty-seven dash O-two A provides that each member of the Board agrees that he or she will recognize that the authority of the Board rests only with the Board as a whole and not with individual Board members and act accordingly. And whereas, Section two dash thirty-seven O-four relates to the conduct of each Commissioner, as it relates to Board and community relations. And whereas, Section two dash thirty-four, I'm sorry, two dash thirty-seven dash O-four A provides that each member of the Board agrees that he or she will seek regular and systemic communications among the Board, employees, and community. And whereas, Section two dash thirty-seven dash O-four A provides, um, that each member of the Board, looks like a duplicate, that he or she, uh, will communicate to the Board expressions of public, I'm sorry, each member of the Board agrees that he or she will communicate to the Board expressions of public reaction to public policies and programs. And whereas, Section two dash thirty-seven dash O-five relates to the conduct of each Commissioner, as it relates to policy development. And whereas, Section dash, Section two dash thirty-seven dash O-five A provides that each member of the Board agrees that he or she will work with other Board members to establish effective policies for the county. And whereas, Section two dash thirty-seven dash O-five B provides that each member of the Board agrees that he or she will make decisions on policy matters only after the discussion at publicly held Board meetings. And whereas, Section two dash thirty-seven dash O-six relates to the conduct of each Commissioner, as it relates to Board meetings. And whereas, Section two dash, seven, thirty-seven dash O-six C provides that each member of the Board agrees that he or she will work with other Board members in a spirit of harmony and cooperation, in spite of differences of opinion that may arise during the discussion and resolution of issues at Board meetings. And whereas, Section two dash thirty-seven dash O-six E provides that each member of the Board agrees that he or she will maintain the confidentiality of all discussion and other matters pertaining to the Board and the county during a section, executive session of the Board. And whereas, Section two dash thirty-seven dash O-nine relates to the conduct of each Commissioner, as it relates to their conduct as a Board member. Whereas, Section two dash thirty-seven dash O-nine C provides that each member of the Board agrees that he or she will communicate in a respective, or I'm sorry, in respectful professional manner with and about fellow Board members. And whereas, since January Twenty-Twenty-Five, Chairwoman Dr. Elika Anderson Henry has engaged in actions that could be considered violations of the Board Code of Conduct. And whereas, a non-exhaustive list of such examples are as follows. A, Commissioner Anderson, I'm sorry, Chairwoman Anderson Henry announced a policy relating to a housing tax, task force, and held a press conference concerning the same in November Twenty-Twenty-Five, without this policy being vetted or approved by the full Board. B, discussions concerning the financial terms and location of the Behavioral Health Crisis Center within the county were discussed in advance by the Chairwoman, without prior knowledge or discussion with the Board. C, Chairwoman Anderson Henry made an alleged ethics violation against another Commissioner, and sent it on social media as an official county statement in May Twenty-Twenty-Five. D, Chairwoman Anderson Henry has raised her voice and yelled at fellow Commissioners while discussing policy items during Board meetings. E, Chairwoman Anderson Henry has made disparaging comments about fellow Commissioners in public and private settings. F, upon information and belief, communication shared and discussed during executive session have been shared by Chairwoman Anderson Henry with members of the public. G, Chairwoman Anderson Henry has attended awards, events, or other public events recognizing the county without sharing the dates or locations of such events with the Board prior to the event. H, Chairwoman Anderson Henry has impeded communication between external partners and fellow Commissioners. I, Chairwoman Anderson Henry has had little proactive communication relating to policy discussions with the Board. And whereas, the Board finds that Chairwoman Anderson Henry's behavior could cause confusion with the general public about when her actions are personal versus carrying out a directive of the Board of Commissioners. And whereas, the Board finds that Chairwoman Anderson Henry's actions could cause a loss in confidence with the Board among the citizens of Clayton County by engaging a behavior that could be seen as combative or disparaging. And whereas, the Board finds that sharing confidential information with members of the public undermines trust in the government, the elected officials of Clayton County, and the Board of Commissioners. And whereas, the Board desires to make Chairwoman Anderson Henry aware of her actions which could violate the Board's Code of Conduct. And whereas, should Chairwoman Anderson Henry continue to engage in such behavior, the more may, the Board may consider additional actions up to and including holding a hearing to sanction her for violations of the Board, violation of the Board's Code of Conduct. And whereas, the Clayton County Board of Commissioners deems it in the best interest of the county, and the county will be best, will best be served by providing this notice to Dr. Chairwoman Elika Anderson Henry for the reasons stated above, and... Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Clayton County, and it is hereby resolved. Section one, the Board of Commissioners hereby, I'm sorry, the Board of Commissioners adopts the above whereas clauses as the preliminary allegations of this Board for future notice of possible violations of the Board's Code of Conduct by Chairwoman Dr. Elika Anderson Henry. The Board further reminds Chairwoman Anderson Henry not to make statements as a representative of the entire Board unless she has been given authority to do so, or she is speaking on matters upon which the Board has made official action. Section two, this resolution shall immediately become, shall immediately, shall immediately become effective upon approval by the Board of Commissioners. That's the entire thing.
All right. Is there any discussion at this time, or are you all ready to move on for Resolution Twenty-Twenty-Five dash two five one?
I have a statement to make. I think what you read are things that we should discuss, either work session, or, I don't know if it could be, uh, discussed in executive session or not, but I think that's something that we need to talk about, instead of doing a resolu- a resolution of. And once it's discussed, and include all the Commissioners with, with all of those things and all. And let's come together as a group representing the citizens of Clayton County, not by resolution, but discussion. And if it's deemed necessary for any of us to have a resolution of something, uh, just aimed at an individual person or, then we take such action. But I think this is something that the Board needs to discuss among ourselves.
Come to town, come to town.
Is there any more, any, anything, any else, anyone else has to say? All right, so we're going to move to Resolution Twenty-Twenty-Five two fifty-one. Board members, what is your pleasure?
I make a motion that we approve Resolution Twenty-Twenty-Five dash two fifty-one.
Second.
All right. Is there any, um, more discussion at this time? Are you ready for the vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All, all opposed?
Nay.
All right, any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. And I'm just going to make my statement here. I just want the citizens to know that I work for you all, and I'm going to continue to go out here and work for the citizens of Clayton County. I have not done anything wrong. I've spoken to my, to the attorney, and these are possible things that I'm, you know, that they're saying that I'm doing, but guess what? I'm going to continue to work for the citizens of Clayton County, and I need you all to please continue to work with me and back me as we move this county forward. Thank you. All right, we are going to move on to Resolution, um, Twenty-Twenty-Five dash two five two, and that's the Board, Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Clayton County. Um, you ready?
Yes.
Okay.
A Resolution, uh, Twenty-Twenty-Five two fifty-two is a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Clayton County, Georgia, approving the purchase of fire equipment consisting of six fire enforcer pumppers from the Clayton County Public Facilities Authority for five million one hundred and ten thousand dollars, to authorize the Chairwoman or her designee to execute any agreements and to otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required under the terms of the agreement, to provide an effective date of this resolution for other purposes.
All right. Is there any questions at this time regarding Resolution Number Twenty-Twenty-Five dash two five two? All right, you, you got some, Commissioner Hambrich?
I, I do.
Mm-hmm.
How is this different from what we passed before?
So, the first, um, vote was to actually, um, decide to purchase the agreement. This deals with the funding. So, this was all of the back and forth, um, that was presented at the work session as to how we were going to move forward with purchasing, whether it was going to be through the Public Facilities Authority, whether it was going to be through, uh, purchasing it directly. Uh, the recommendation is that we use the Public Facilities Authority for the reasons that were stated back in the work session.
Work session, okay.
Any other discussion at this time? All right, I need a motion for Resolution Twenty-Twenty-Five dash two five two.
Move that we adopt Twenty-Twenty-Five dash two five two.
All right, I second the motion. Any more discussion? Are you ready for the vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion carries. All right, next, we will move into our public hearings. All right, next, um, we'll move into BOC two, two five zero six dash zero five two three.
Thank you, Madam Chair, good evening.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I was waiting on you, your star.
Citizens may speak for or against an item that is considered by law to be a zoning decision. Each side will have ten minutes to present its case. In the event there is more than one speaker per side, speakers must divide their time to complete their full presentation in ten minutes' time allotted, allotment. And when their time is up, they must cease speaking and leave the podium. Applicants and citizens in favor of an item will speak first. Applicants and cases shall have the right to reserve time for a rebuttal, and opponents of zoning decisions items shall have no right for a rebuttal. When speaking, speak directly into the microphone and begin stating your name, address, and the name of any organization you represent. Please be reminded that abusive, derogatory, or offensive language would not be permitted. Thank you.
All right. All right. You can go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
First case before us reads, "A Request by Battle Law, PC, to amend the future land use map category for 9577, 9579, Highway 54, and 9350, Ryan Ridge Court, Jonesboro, Georgia, 30238, from agriculture to low-density residential for 232 single-family detached lots. The subject property consists of 146.24 acres, more or less, further known as the parcels listed in your agenda, and located on Highway 54 between Tyler Terrace and Welly's Lake Trace, and at the dread end of Ryan, excuse me, dead end of Ryan Ridge Court and Jordan Mill Trail. The proposed access is from Highway 54. The recommendation initially was denial from staff. Staff has met with the applicant and other departments, and based on those meetings, staff has changed our recommendation to approval with conditions." Zack recommended denial. The tabling requests, there was a table request by the applicant submitted on October 21st, 2025, at the Board of Commissioners meeting. There was no public hearing. So I would like to read the recommendation, I'm sorry, the conditions in the record.
Okay.
So there was a condition, it's not in there. Okay, there was a condition based on the updated site plan. The updated approval con, includes the condition of a contingency of the G dot approval. Once that has been approved by G dot, the applicant can move forward with obtaining a land disturbance permit, but without the G dot, the applicant cannot submit a land disturbance permit. We would like to clean that language up a little bit if we could. But, so basically for the record, upon contingency of the G dot approval, the applicant cannot submit the land disturbance permit. That is the condition.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Is the applicant present or here today? Are you still going through?
Yes, we want to go through it.
Okay.
This is the outline of the parcel in question on Highway 54. Again, this is the zoning map of the property, and the next map is the, is the site plan. So the prior, there was only one ingress egress to the site. The applicant has added a second ingress egress, as you can see at the southern portion of the site plan. At the northern portion of the site plan, there is an emergency ingress egress, and it will be gated. Here are the elevations of the proposed homes. And there are several, and this is the amenity area. Yes, so we are discussing the flume, so we're going to add that condition to the zoning, rezoning part. So the flume would just be a recommendation of approval. I apologize.
Are you finished?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I will make sure you got everything out. All right, is the applicant here, present today?
Good evening, Commissioner. Michelle Battle with Battle Law, 3562, Habersham at Northlake, Tucker, Georgia, 30084. We are excited to be here this evening with regards to the proposal. I've sent my PowerPoint to staff. With regards to the flume, the current designation-
Before you start, how many, how, how much of the time do you need for rebuttal? You about to start.
Yeah, I don't think I'm going to be that long.
So how much time?
Um, I don't, I don't know. We do have, I think the owner is here, the property, and we're going to have her come up and speak for a little while as well. So I'll save like, two minutes.
Two minutes, okay.
Yeah, after she comes up and speaks. So the first part of the application is in response to the future land use, and the current land use map, we can see here that this property is located off of Highway 54. We are north of St. Andrews subdivision, and south of Taylor's Landing, and directly across from Monday's Mill High, High School. This property was originally used for agricultural purposes, and the current owner of the property will come and talk a little bit about how her father used to farm this land, actually prior to both the St. Andrews and the Taylor's Landing subdivisions even being built, actually even before Highway 54 was put in. And so they farmed that land for as long as they could, and eventually the property has been overgrown by foliage and trees and the like, and is now all forested land. And so to try and return that to agricultural use simply is not economically feasible, and there has been no one that has expressed any interest in developing this property for, or redeveloping it for farmland. What we are asking is for the land use to be amended, to allow it to be consistent with the low-density residential that's already prevalent within this community. Both the St. Andrews community, as well as the Taylor's Landing community, all have land use designations of low-density residential. On the west side of the property, there is still some agricultural land, but past that, in the orange is high-density residential, which would allow for apartment dwellings and the like. And so what we are requesting again is for the amendment of the flume to low-density residential to make that consistent with all the other uses that are already within the area. This is an overview of the project, where we can see that there's quite a bit of area where we've got wetlands that is still going to be utili, will not be utilized and will preserve, and we've got a lot of green space on this site overall. We originally started this project with 387 units, and we were looking for a PUD, and it included as well both single-family detached lots, as well as townhome units. And we have removed that mainly because of the comments that we received back from the community. And so we switched to RS 110, which is consistent with the Taylor's Landing community, and we now have a total of 232 lots that we are proposing on this site, which is a significant drop in density, and we're at 1.59 units per acre on this site. I'm going to kind of preserve the rest of my comments for the next application, and I'm going to ask if the owner wants to come up and say a few things either now or at the, on the next matter, but I'm going to ask her if she'll do that now.
Yeah, she can come up, come up and approach.
Thank you so much for allowing me to speak with you today.
Thank you.
My name is Melissa Meadows. I live in Stockbridge, Georgia, 245 Jasper Drive. I'd like to give you, I love to talk, I, I should take about five, 10 minutes. I'd probably not that long.
Well, you won't be able to take that long.
Okay.
Four minutes and 51 seconds. Did you take all the rest of my time? Yeah, okay. Okay.
Okay. My, uh, my father was a World War II veteran, and like all World War II veterans at the time, he came home and he wanted a family, and he had made plans while he was, he was in both the Pacific and the European. When he came home, he got married, they made plans, they wanted to have a farm. He bought first, he first bought 25 acres, what he could afford, and as more land came up, he bought that. And eventually he ended up having over 100 acres. And now it's, he kept going. He had cows, he had Black Angus cows, they were registered. People came from all over the United States to buy from him. We had chicken houses, we sold eggs, he had the, he had the pond, he also let people go down there and fish. They fish for a dollar a day, so they always asked him why he didn't do more. He says, "Well, I can't guarantee they'll get anything." So that's why it was just a dollar a day. I understand everybody in here who does not want the property to change. My daddy did not want the property around him to change, and he fought the zoning for every single one of the ones that came around his property, and he lost. But he was a good neighbor, but when the properties started getting filled up, he had about 35 head of cattle, they were over 1,000 pounds each, and the only reason something that big stays in a fence is if it chooses to. And if it sees something better on the other side of that fence, they're going through it. And unfortunately, it went through a lot of people's yards, and it ate their yards. And he paid for the replacement, and that happened multiple times. People complained about the cows being noisy, they are. They complained about the smell, ranching is sneaky. They complained about the chickens. He got rid of the chickens, they were particularly smelly and loud. It got to the point where he simply could not have a farm because it would affect, it was affecting too many people around him. He sold all of his head of cattle to a man in Henry County. Where we are now is if this land were to be used agriculturally, to be able to support the land in order to pay the taxes, this land would have to be, every single one of those trees have to come down. There is no way to have cattle or even putting crops, it's all woodland. We are soon going to be in an untenable position where we will have to do that if it doesn't, if something doesn't change, because we do have to continue to pay the taxes on that land, and all those, those trees could come down, no matter what. We also worry about this land being completely unpoliceable. The, we have found where people have, they cut the fences, they've gone, they trespass, it doesn't matter how much we put up there, and they fish in the pond. Also found areas where they have built campfires, and that's the one that really worries me because it's all that land, it's all that pine trees, you know how quickly they can go up if that fire gets out of control, and it's not going to stay on that property, it's going to go to the houses around it. That's what scares me the most. I also know that the police had got my attention, permission to go on the land because they found parts of a body, and they were trying to find the rest of it. I don't know if they found the rest of it, but they did go looking on this land. It's completely unpoliceable. My father loved that land, and he loved his farm, but it's, he lost it, and primarily because you cannot, you cannot farm in that area now. But I appreciate you letting me talk, and I do want to reiterate, I understand people not wanting it to change, but I don't know what else to do at this point.
Thank you, ma'am. Your time is up. All right. All right. At this time, is there anyone here that is in opposition of this item? In opposition? All right, if you, you can come up first, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Tracy Morrow. I'm in unincorporated Clayton County, Third District. I want to speak on why two subdivision access points are required for a subdivision this size, why they must have two independent, true independent access points. This is not just about fire trucks, it's about protecting families, ensuring safety, evacuations, and preventing what is called single-point failure. Clayton County Subdivision Ordinance, Chapter 86, Article 3, requires subdivisions with more than 100 homes to have two access points. The law is written to guarantee safety, traffic circulation, and emergency access. With 232 families in one neighborhood, a single entry and exit is simply not enough. Under the Fire, under Fire Marshal Enforcement Code, the International Fire Code, Section D 107.1, it states, "Developments more than 30 dwelling units shall provide two separate approved fire apparatus access roads." This requirement is just not about fire trucks weigh in, it is equally as important for residents to get out. Fire Code is written to prevent single points of failure, ensuring that if one road is blocked, another remains open for evacuations for a housing unit this size. The Atlanta Regional Commissioner stressed that subdivision points must be multiple and well separated to improve circulation, reduce congestion, congestion, and ensure emergency evacuations. Entrances only a few hundred feet apart on the same road do not meet the intended requirements. If you look up there, those two entries are on the same road, they point, they go in the same direction, they're just 300 feet apart. It takes 300 feet just to, to get up speed to get on the highway, you know? You can't, and you'd be running into the next exit. And if you look at the picture, there's actually the exit that leads into Welly's Lake, four houses, then their exit, four houses, then their second, second exit, four houses, and then about 15 houses to ours. Those aren't proper exits, they need to be further apart. The, that operates as one single exit. I mean, the Clayton County law, Fire Marshal's rules and regulations, and the ARC use three key words, provide, separate, and independent. The developer must provide these access points, they must be separate, and most importantly, they must be independent. Because the developer already knows that this is a problem, to approve this and then later on say, oops, we forgot, or we didn't know, you cannot give the developer a waiver, because that's the only way he should be able to cut through our subdivisions, because he already knows. A waiver is a hardship, and a hardship has, according to law, it, it's not about inconvenience or financial disadvantage. To purchase this land upfront, knowing that is, it is inadequate for 232 homes is not hardship, it's a business decision, he knows the law, and, and we would like for you to deny this. We would like you to deny it because of safety purposes, we would like for you to deny it based on the fact it goes against our 2039 comprehensive plan, and we would like for you to deny it because we like farmland and we're on a highway. A highway needs buffers like farmland. It needs, a highway has the most exhaust being pumped out of cars, because that's, it's the street that gets the most traffic. In Clayton County laws, we're right up on the street. Farmland, whether it's, whether you're growing crops, whether it just has foliage or trees, it absorbs all of that exhaust. It eats it up like candy and it spits out fresh air for us. We like the farmland for the fresh air, for the noise reduction, but legally, we want that, we want it either left farmland or for them to reduce the sizes, I mean, the amount of homes to meet code, because it puts our safety at jeopardy. And again, it goes against the 2039 comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else who is in opposition of this item? You come up.
Madam Chair, good evening. My name is Carlos Bonilla, 91 Tyler, Jonesboro, Georgia. First thing is, going to the point of carbon sequestration, sequestration or carbon capture. I mean, 146 acres can go any, in, in a year, can reduce carbon dioxide anywhere from 78,000 pounds to 300,000 pounds. So that means the Clayton County air should be better. Number two, one of my points, of course, comprehension on the comprehension plan 2039, stay green. The other point that I have, and I would say, I'm upset, but I'm okay, I'm not crazy, just found out today, oh, there's been recommended denial, denied, after we've been the whole week, the whole time, two, three months, six months, denied, denied, recommended, denied, and today, oh, they changed their mind. I wonder why. If somebody, oh, changed your mind? If somebody, oh, changed their mind, I don't know. But that's not fair. But I found out today, right here, there was change. Now, I understand there will be no more cows. I understand there'll be no more farm. But the owner can do something good for Clayton County for her tax base, for her own taxes. She can donate the land to Clayton, make a nice park, keep it green. We need that green over here. And we remember her forever as the owner that gave the land to us. Great. While we remember her forever as the lady that gave me two hundred and thirty houses, five hundred cars, and my loan gets destroyed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any, anyone else that is in, not in opposition of this item?
Hi. Lisa Waller, unincorporated Clayton County. I just have an issue with our commissioner, Allen. We had a Zoom meeting. She was on the phone. We was on the Zoom meeting with the law group. And then she asked, is the landowner on the phone? But she already had, you already had your mind made up. And that's what's hurtful to us because we elected you. And what you said stuck with, well, it still pissed me off to this day. But it said, what I want the community to know, at the end of the day, the decision will be up to me. Like, what about us? You didn't meet with us, but you met with the lawyer and you went out and met with the landowner. That's not right. We voted you in and you should hear what we have to say. But you already had your mind made up. So it was like a waste of time. So why would you waste our time knowing that that was your decision? And it's like, are you the only one that's going to vote on this? Because you said it was up to you. So what happens to the other commissioners? You, they don't have a say so, it's just you? I think that was wrong. But I oppose this land development.
Okay, Chairwoman, I would like to take upon a personal privilege here. So I have attended every zoning hearing. I've sat here. I've heard all you guys. Every time you spoke about this project, I've sat right here at every zoning meeting and listened. At the last meeting, what did I tell you guys? I said, I was not going to rezone that area. So I spoke. So it's not true what you said, my mind was already made up.
No, when we got on the Zoom meeting.
Let me, please let me speak. So I spoke to you last month. The Zoom meeting was last week. When I spoke to you last month, I told you guys I was not going to rezone it, okay? And what I told you guys on the call was, I educated myself as a commissioner. I went to speak to state representatives. I went and got studies from the House Governmental Affairs. And I said, at the time, I was not educated on the data of Clayton County. I went back to educate myself. And that is the point, that I said, you know what? We have to move in a different direction. So it is not true when you said, I have not listened to you guys. Because I have attended every community meeting. I've attended every zoning meeting. And I spoke to you guys before we were on that Zoom call. Thank you.
Can I have one more comment? Right, you are true on that. But when you said that, what I want the community to know, at the end of the day, the decision will be up to me. When you asked, was the landowner?
Ma'am, your time is up.
I'm sorry.
All right, thank you. All right, all right. All right, at this time, let's see. We don't have any more time. I'm sorry for those in opposition. And so Ms. Battle.
I'm Chair. You could add one minute and thirty seconds.
I can add one minute and thirty seconds, based on, okay. Okay, that's fine. All right, anymore, do we have any, can y'all add, can you all add one minute and thirty, is it six seconds? Was it thirty-six or thirty? It was about thirty-six.
Okay.
Yeah, one minute and thirty-six seconds. All right, come on.
My name is Marie Starks, one six five Ethan Moore, District Three. My only question is, well, I have two questions. Is, are we still going through Saint Andrews as a throughway? Okay, that was my only issue with it. But I want to bring up one other thing is the, the school district. I live right in Saint Andrews. But one of the things I see as a problem is traffic. The people fly down that road. We don't have cameras on that road to take pictures of them flying in where the schools, when the kids are getting out of school. But we need to do something about that traffic. If you're going to bring those houses there, we've got to do something about that school zone there because people are just flying doing forty, fifty miles when the school zone should be twenty-five miles an hour. That's my only concern.
Thank you, sir.
For bringing it in.
Ms. Funny. Well, you know what, you, yeah, I didn't know if you still, Ms. Funny, can you hold up? And then I'll let her come and then you come. Because she did have her hand up.
Hi, my name is Vicky Stewart. I'm in District Three and I live in Taylor's Landing. With the proposed of the emergency entrance for, out of the subdivision, there is only one way in and one way out of Taylor's Landing. Where they're proposing for the emergency exit, which they say is going to be locked, you will have trouble for any fire engines coming.
Your time is up.
Oh, is it?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. So we don't have enough time for one more. Mr. Reed, do we have time? Are we good? Is that it?
That's it.
That's it, okay. Okay, our time is up. Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you. All right, thank you ma'am. All right, next, is there anything that you, you would like to come up for rebuttal? Would you like to come up for rebuttal? You got two minutes?
So there are a couple of things. Number one, with regards to what we have been doing over the past month and a half, we made it a point to meet with staff, to meet with the Transportation Department, to meet with the Fire Department, to ensure that we had addressed all of their issues and concerns, including the access points. We have met with GDOT. GDOT has preliminarily approved the two points of entrance off of Highway fifty-four. However, we are required to have a remote point of entrance. And that came from both the Fire Department in meeting with the I F C code requirements as well as with transportation because of concerns regarding the dam in the middle of the property. And so we added the additional point of access into Taylor's Ridge, understanding, quite honestly, that under the code, and we talked about this during the ZAG meeting, Section eighty-six one fifty of the code actually requires us to connect into the adjacent subdivisions that stub out into our subdivision, into the property. There are actually five, four points that stub into this particular property. One is from Saint Andrews. And there are three coming in from the Taylor's Ridge side of the property, on the north side and the east side. We are asking for a waiver from, that only ZAG can give, to not connect into all the points. Our site plan only shows the one point of entry on the northern side of the property, that being an emergency only access so that we are not overburdening the streets on the other side. So if there is in fact a fire or some issue with the bridge that will be placed in the interior of the property and people need to be able to get out, fire and safety will be able to allow them to get out through that other space. Otherwise, they will utilize the two points of entry off of Highway fifty-four. And we did do a traffic study.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, Commissioner Allen, what is your pleasure?
Okay, so let me say this. Oh, you want, go ahead.
Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners, just quick, just a couple of quick points, more so to the community. Just to reiterate, this is simply a zoning approval and or denial. The civil drawings for this property have not been finalized. So there's a lot of talks about minimum access points. And through the Technical Review Committee, we denied this multiple times. They have now came back with a third emergency access road that we are still talking through because I need to understand exactly what that means. Is it gated, is it not, is it connected? International Fire Code, in addition, the Georgia Minutes one twenty-three-three denote that hundred and twenty-plus homes, two minimum egress points. The two egress points in the bottom right-hand corner do not meet Fire Code. In addition to that, the two egress points must be a minimum of half the diagonal distance of the parcel. That is why they've now added a third access point up in the top of the parcel, which they're calling a fire access road, which we still are working through. So just some clarification more for the community, this is simply zoning. I just want them to understand, them to share that Fire Code will be applied. And if and when this gets to a site civil review that we apply, we will ensure that we apply the code one hundred percent.
Thank you, Chief Swire.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. So you took some of my thunder here. And I want, I want the citizens to understand that this is a part about being commissioners. I hear you guys, I hear what you're saying, okay? And like the fire chief just said, this is simply a zoning change. Not saying that this is what you guys will see because we guys still need. So the only thing I'm doing today is rezoning this from agriculture to residential. I'm not approving their layout. I'm not approving the access points. I'm not approving any of that you see. Like the chief just said, that has to go through his office, Transportation and Development Office. That is it, okay? And as a commissioner, I don't have the luxury to operate off emotions. And this is why I operate off facts. But I want to share something really quickly so the citizens that are here and are listening understand the decision that I plan to make today. Today, state representative, one of our state representatives sent us a study of, from the Governmental Housing Affairs Subcommittee. And it talks about the lowest vacancies in Atlanta. Georgia has a statewide lack of homes. And as I'm flipping through the presentation, just to educate myself, Clayton County, number one on the list here, okay? So let me explain to you guys what it means. Just give me some time here. There is a high demand for homes and a low supply here in Clayton County. What that means, why we seeing the rises in houses? Because there are no supply of homes in Clayton County. Now, I have a copy, Ms. Yolanda, for anybody who wants, who wants to see it. And the state here gives us a recommendation. One of the major factors, they said, is the restrictive and limiting permitting and zoning processes here in the community, not just Clayton County. But there's, there are three other areas on here that you can see here, okay? So with that being said, as commissioner, I don't have the luxury. I want to operate off facts and datas and take my emotions out of it, okay? So based on this state recommendation from the state, I would like to make a motion that we approve the rezoning of B O C two five zero six dash zero five two three with the GDOT conditions.
Madam, Madam Commissioner, is this just a future land use map right now?
Which one is that? I thought that was what the?
The next one is the actual rezoning.
Okay, so I would like, scratch that. I would like to make a motion to approve B O C two five zero six dash zero five three flume. Thank you.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any more discussion at this time? Are you ready for? Ma'am, ma'am. Thank you, thank you. All right, any discussion at this time? Are you ready for the vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it and the motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, next, we're going to the rezoning. We just approved the flume. The rezoning is the, the change of the zoning of the property. And the caption reads nine five seven seven, excuse me, B O C dash two five zero six dash zero five two four, a request by Battle Law to rezone nine five seven seven and nine five seven nine, Highway fifty-four, and nine three five zero, Ryan Ridge Court, Jonesboro, Georgia, three zero two three eight, from agriculture to RS one ten, single-family residential for development with two hundred and thirty-two single-family detached lots. The subject property consists of a hundred and forty-six point twenty-four acres, more or less, further known as the parcels listed in the agenda. The property is located between Highway fifty-four, between Tyler Terrace and Whelley's Lake Trace and at the dead end of Ryan Ridge Court and Jordan Mill Trail. Again, staff initial recommendation was denial. After meeting with the applicant and other departments, our recommendation did change to approval with condition that upon approval by GDOT, then the applicant can submit for land disturbance permit. With no approval, the applicant cannot submit. The applicant did table the request on October twenty-first. At the Board of Commissioners meeting, the public hearing did not occur. We have the zoning map of the subject property. And the land use is here. They are asking to change the, what you just approved, to low-density residential. The next page is the site plan. Again, we're speaking of the two points of ingress, egress. Previously, they only had one ingress, egress. Now they have the two at the southern portion of the property. At the northern portion is the emergency access that will be gated as noted on the site plan. That was not before you previously. The next slide. Again, these are the elevations of the proposed homes. And the applicant is here to speak on the project.
All right, will the applicant please come forth? How much of the ten minutes will you need to reserve for rebuttal?
I'll leave three.
Three, okay.
I'm going to continue where we left off the last time. Again, we've got two hundred and thirty-two units. We are saving a significant amount of green space on this site. I believe about sixty-three acres or so of the property for such. This is the typical lot layout that we see before us. The minimum lot area is twelve thousand square feet and we've got minimum lot width of seventy-five feet. We are here under the RS one ten district regulations, which allow for a minimum of eleven thousand two hundred and fifty square feet. With regards to, there are some lots along the southern perimeter of the property that are adjacent to the Saint Andrews community in which we have increased the buffer from thirty feet to fifty feet, with thirty feet being owned by the HOA and the back twenty feet of the lot because the lots are so deep. That will be a buffer area as well. And that will be noted on the plat, assuming we are able to move forward. This site also includes a number of amenities, unlike some of the adjacent communities. That was a piece of the discussions with the, out, with the community as well as with the planning staff. We are offering pickleball courts, a playground, a clubhouse, and a pool. And then additionally, as we move in through the community, at Lakeside, there will be a park area with a pavilion. And additionally, there will be a dog park near the northern end of the site. There will be sidewalks throughout this community and very walkable. It will be referred to as Westport. And these are some renderings that we have. Staff has already shown the differing housing types. There will be a number of different housing types. Knight Homes, actually, now Templar, is actually the builder in this instance. To know that the Knight family has been in Clayton County for quite some time. In fact, their office, old office location was in District Four. And they continue to be very proud of their efforts in the Clayton County area. And they've actually done some of the subdivisions within this area over the years. This subdivision will have both two-story and single-story homes. So that allows for diversity of product and for people of different, differing needs to have options. And all the homes won't look alike. There will be many different options with regards to the product type that will be available, both with, some with, you know, full brick, some with partial brick, some with two-car garages, some with three-car garages. And so we anticipate these price points being four hundred thousand dollars and up for the two-story product and maybe slightly less for some of the one-story product. This is the kind of highlights of the amenity areas that are proposed. And with that, we would respectfully re- And with that, we would respectfully request approval, subject to the conditions set forth by staff. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. At this time, is there anyone who is in favor of this item? Anyone that's in favor? All right, we'll move on. Is there anyone, now let me set the timer. Is there anyone that is in opposition of this item? All right, Ms. Funny, come up, please. Ms. Funny, Ms. Funny, you can come up first.
Otanya Jean Funny, District 3. I find this project very short-sighted, and I feel that once you change the zoning, you also lose control of what can go there. So, by leaving it as agriculture, if something was better, we now don't have control of that. One of the issues that I have, what happened to our goal of workforce housing? Because $400,000 is not workforce housing. So, we have so many goals here in Clayton County, but we're not achieving any of them. So, we're wasting the community's time because you all say one thing and you do another. Here's another thing. We said that we was going to focus on economic development, where this property is right here on two major corridors, Terra Boulevard and 54. We haven't even negotiated with the developers, developers to make this mixed use instead of just making it single residency. So, when you talk about, oh, we're going to bring in business to lower people's tax burden, how are we doing that with this property? 232 homes, one park? One pickleball court for 232 people? For 232 homes, how many families is that? There's not even enough amenities for this type of subdivision, not enough. So, we told the people we were going to focus on economic development to lower people's tax burden, this project doesn't do this. 146 acres of land. Clayton County does not have a lot of land, and we're going to just put more houses. So, the whole burden of the housing for, for the state of Georgia, we're going to put it all on the backs of Clayton County. We don't have to do that. We have projects now that have been approved that haven't even started going up. We have townhomes on 85 that they can't even find buyers for. So, we have housing going up. Have we even evaluated what we have now before we go and approve another 232 homes on valuable land that we could have used for economic development? So, yeah, when you got to go and research what you need to do because you just started the job, you're going to make some short-decided decisions.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who's in opposition, come up? Oh, can, yeah. Can I let her go? She's been over in the corner.
Good evening, commissioners. I think we all know that we were, of course, opposed to the one that you just passed because we think that's just a precursor to getting this done. I've lived in St. Andrews subdivision since it was built in 1999, and throughout that time, we have enjoyed what are two circular streets there. So, it scares me to think about the possibility even that that will be an emergency egress into my community. We back out of our, our driveways into the street. I can't imagine children being able to play around anymore if there's traffic coming in and going out, and even the emergency vehicles. So, no, we're not, we don't, we don't trust that. People have gotten up here and said, you said one thing, you've done something else. So, no, we don't trust that that will be the end of it. I think as someone said earlier, oh, you say that now, but then the board will say, oh, well, you need a second egress, and you need a second entrance and egress. So, where can we put it? And it seems like we've been battling battle, battle law for like forever. Now, the, your advisory committee denied this twice. The zoning people who know about zoning have denied it twice. So, I'm not sure what information the House Government Affairs Subcommittee can provide to my district that would be meaningful. I mean, that's all well and good. I'm sure the state has a vision. But we also have a vision to preserve my district. And I was looking, Ms. Allen, at the about for you. One of the things that stood out to me here is that you said you're committed to fostering a district where families can confidently raise their children and retirees can enjoy a peaceful, fulfilling life. This doesn't lead to a peaceful, fulfilling life. This doesn't lead to quality of life for our children. And I respectfully ask that this be denied, as it has been denied many times over. And we, we are asking that this be denied again.
Thank you.
Ma'am, what's your name?
Is there anyone else who's in opposition?
Ma'am, I'm sorry, her name, what's your name?
I'm sorry, state your name.
Georgia Thomas, 9698 Tyler Terrace, St. Andrews.
Restate your name also when you come up.
Hi, I'm Tracy Morrow. I would like for you guys to deny this project, but I just have a few things to say. She has already stated that she is going to ask for a waiver. So, she's telling you guys, this is like, I already know it's not going to fit. Already know it's not according to code. So, she's already saying, I'm going to ask for a waiver, that's a hustle. Before they purchase the land, before they rezone the land, they already know this. So, you cannot make, plan something knowing that it doesn't fit and then ask for a waiver. She should not be granted a waiver. So, this is why it should be denied. It's, it's going to be a hustle. If that, if that get approved, then the burden will be on the other subdivisions to deal with her traffic because she got approved for something that she shouldn't never have gotten approved for. That's all I want to say, is you guys can't give her a waiver. She's already, already planning for it. So, she's trying to hustle us, and, and we don't want it near us. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who's in opposition?
Lisa Waller, Jonesboro, Georgia. Only thing I have to say is 200-plus homes right across the street from Monday Mill. Is it possible to put that back where you had the school, wherever? Is it possible? And if you, where she's talking about, where you have to exit, you have to take a right, and then at the light, make a U-turn to go back down 54. There's no way 200-something houses right across the street from Monday Mill High School? Doesn't make any sense. And I don't think you've been over there, but if you go to Monday Mill High School, it's right there, and that's where she putting all those houses.
Thank you. Thank you. So, you can come up. Is there, I miss Will, is there anyone else in opposition, we know?
Good evening, Brown Cheeks, District 1, Unincorporated, Morrow, Georgia. I just have one question in regard to this development. Has there been any conversation on how this will impact Clayton County Public Schools? Has a developer talked with Clayton County Public Schools to even maybe think about how this will affect the size of our classes for our youth in this county? Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else that's in opposition? Mr. Garber?
Mickey Garber, Unincorporated, Rex, Georgia. I'm here to satisfy both parties. And I, I'm not trying to be funny, I'm trying to be sincere. Clayton County, it has land area. We're the third smallest land area in the state of Georgia in counties. We are the fifth highest densely populated with people in Clayton County. And yes, we need more housing. Let's just face the facts. We can't keep building single, two-story buildings and, and get through our problem and satisfy everybody. We have to go higher. We have to have apartment buildings with different levels of accommodations to satisfy all the people in there. We can still house the people as long as we stack them up higher. We can, we can preserve the green space with going higher, and we can double the amenities for that place in going higher. It will satisfy everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garber. Is there anyone else who is in opposition of this item? All right. Saying none, will the applicant please come forth for rebuttal?
Can we go back to the PowerPoint? I want to, is that, that's not me, is it? I want to be clear about a couple of...
Wait, wait, Ms. Bell, can you all set the time for rebuttal? Thank you.
I want to be clear about a couple of things. Number one, we have never, ever had access into St. Andrews. We've never proposed it. I'm not sure why that keeps resonating for people, but that has never been proposed. The code indicates that when you have streets that stub in, that we are required to stub into those streets because that's what the code says. I can't say this has always been enforced, but if you go to the code in Clayton County, we had this discussion during ZAG, that only ZAG can waive that. So, the option would be to actually connect, yes, into St. Andrews and into three more locations. But we, based on the community indicating that they don't want those connections, have agreed to seek a waiver of that. And I believe that ZAG will give that because they know that the community doesn't want all those points of connection. So, we ended with one only additional point of connection, and instead of making, we're fine with it being full access if that's what everyone wanted. But the community does not want full access, so we said the compromise would be to ask for it to be emergency access only. Otherwise, again, we would be required under the code. I'm not snowballing, I'm not giving folks, I'm not trying to hoodwink anybody. I don't have time for that. I'm trying to simply follow what the code asked for, but also take into consideration what the community was asking for. That's number one. Number two, price points on homes are based on what the current sale values are. If the county wants to team with us to have some type of more affordability within there, I'm sure that my client would be more than happy to work with them. But for right now, with regards to the types of homes that we have seen historically coming into Clayton County and a desire to have a better product because of some of the challenges that have been in the past, we are presenting what we thought was a number of different options at different pricing levels to give folks options with regards to what their homes could be. And we appreciate the fact that we are in an economic crisis for some, and that housing is important, and that diversity of product is important. We tried to put townhomes into this community, and the community made it very clear, they didn't want townhomes. They didn't want more density. That's why we cut the density. But when you cut the density, there's fewer people to share in all of the amenities and the roadways and all the things that are necessary in order to build the product out. So, we think that this is a wonderful opportunity to bring more homeowners into the area, just like the, the prior owner said. They didn't want the two subdivisions on either side of them, but yet they're here.
Thank you, Ms. Bell, your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Allen, what is your pleasure at this time?
Okay, of course, I have something to say. So, I don't remember who, but someone mentioned the vision for the county. And last year, Clayton County adopted a Clayton County Moving Forward 2024 Comprehensive Plan. And one of the goals in this comprehensive plan, under the housing goal, is to create and preserve a variety of housing options for existing and future residents, from senior housing to missing middle housing, to affordable housing, to middle-income housing, and high-end housing. How does this relate to economic development? One of the challenges that is on this housing goal, that's listed here, lack of middle-income housing stock. Middle-income housing stocks will bring those residents with the buying power to help us get the shops and the restaurants that we need. If we wonder why Henry, because everyone mentions Henry and Fayette, why they are growing, it's because they have somewhere for those people with a broader income to live. Currently in Clayton County, we do not hence, that is why it is a challenge on the lack of middle housing income stock. So, what I'm going to do is make decisions on facts, make decisions on the comprehensive plan and the strategic plan that Clayton County has adopted long before me. So, I would like to go ahead and approve, let me see where my agenda is at. You get the numbers right.
2506-0523.
Thank you, ma'am. I would like to go ahead to make the motion to approve BOC 2506-0524 with the conditions of the G dot as well.
Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Any more discussion at this time? Are you ready for the vote?
Do you want to read out the, um, the conditions?
Well, it was what the planning, the zoning, the zoning. They have a condition with G dot.
So, do we need to read out the conditions, Mr. Reed?
Did you say it?
She said it, she said it when she first came up. If you'd like to stake it, state it back in the record, that's fine.
You might need to redo the motion.
Contingency to the approval of G dot, a land disturbance permit cannot be submitted by the applicant.
Thank you. All right. Are you ready for the vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it and the motion passes. Thank you. All right, next is public hearing, BOC 2508-0541, conditional use permit.
This item's withdrawn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The caption reads, "A request by Tony Barber on behalf of Gerald Vaughn and Chrystina Reed Vaughn for a conditional use permit for detached accessory dwelling unit at 5470 Barwin Drive, Rex, Georgia, 30273. The subject property consists of .59 acres. It is zone RS 180 zoning district, further known as parcel number 12167B-B002, located at the intersection of Barwin Drive and Orchid Entrance. On November 3rd, 2025, the applicant submitted a request to withdraw the petition. Staff has accepted the withdrawal of the, of the petition. ZAG recommendation also accepted the withdrawal of the petition on November 3rd." So, therefore, the applicant may not be here tonight, I'm not sure, but the applicant is seeking a withdrawal tonight. I would like to make a motion to accept the withdrawal of BOC 2508-0541.
All right, I second that motion. Is there any discussion at this time? Are you ready for the vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, any abstentions? The ayes have it and the motion passes. Next, BOC 2508-0546.
Thank you. The caption reads, "A request by Nuevo's Bilingual Ministry Incorporated for conditional use permit for a place of worship at 7441 Terra Boulevard, Jonesboro, Georgia, 30236. The subject property consists of 2.47 acres. It is zone misuse zoning district and also located in the Terra Boulevard and Business Corridor overlay districts. It is further known as parcel number 13178C-A002, located between Battle Creek Road and Valley Hill Road. Staff has recommended approval. ZAG recommended approval with conditions, and the conditions is due to provide security and that the fire truck turn radius must be met. I did speak with Lieutenant Davis, and the applicant has satisfied that turn radius."
All right. So, is the applicant present tonight? Please state your name and county of residence, and how much time, how much of the 10 minutes you want to reserve for rebuttal?
All right. I probably do five minutes.
Five minutes, okay.
Good afternoon. My name is Pastor Laurinville Anderson. I reside, I'm here with my wife also, Rosie Ann McCardo. We live 220 Sunderland Road in Stockbridge, Georgia. As I said, my name is Laurinville Anderson. We represent Nuevo's Camino's Bilingual Ministry, which means new beginning bilingual ministry. We are currently renting a room from another location at the moment. So, we would like our own space. So, we are, we started back in April. We currently have 15 members right now. We're engaged in a two-year lease with this facility, which is seven-four-four-one Terra Boulevard, Jonesboro, Georgia. Our goal is, of course, is to grow into Clayton County area with the help of God first and foremost, and of course, you guys. We would like to expand possibly to get a bigger spot, location, facility at a later date if needed. Our mission first is inclusion, fostering an environment where everyone, regardless of background or language, will feel welcome and valued. Communication, we promote and provide an effective way of communicating with or in a diverse setting, languages, ensuring full participation from our brothers and sisters. Services would be committed to help the community, both local and globally, with love, honor, respect, and empathy. Spirituality, of course, seeking a continuous spiritual growth, depending, deepening, I'm sorry, faith and Bible understanding. And of course, unity. And last but not least, integrity leading with honesty, transparency, and ethical principles in all actions and decisions. That facility that we're looking at right now is a eighteen hundred square foot. Like I mentioned before, we have roughly 15 members at the moment. We've addressed lighting, parking, and like she also mentioned, the fire department. So, that's it for me right now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. You can have a seat.
Thank you. God bless.
God bless you too as well. All right. Next, is there anyone who is, who is for this facility? Who would like to speak in, for this facility, in favor?
Tell them to put two forty-three back on.
Put two forty-three back on, y'all. They're getting fast like me back there. All right. Again, is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this facility? Seeing none, is there anyone? And I'll let him say it for the... Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Tell them to set it to, you gotta set it back again. Seeing none, all right. Would the applicant like to come back up and say anything else for rebuttal? Thank you. Thank you. All right. Commissioner Davis, what is your pleasure?
Move that we approve BOC two-five zero eight dash zero five four six with conditions.
Can you state those conditions?
Okay, the condition is that the applicant must provide security and to meet the fire truck turn radius per ZAG. As I stated before, I did speak to Lieutenant Davis and he has stated that the applicant has satisfied the condition number two.
All right. Thank you. All right. Well, you've, you've, your time is up. I'm sorry, Pastor. I hate to tell the pastor no, but your time is up. All right. And so, again, we have a motion on the floor. Can we get a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion at this time? Are you ready for the vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it and the motion passes. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next is item thirty-one, public hearing, BOC twenty-five oh nine dash zero five six three.
This reads, "A request to the Board of Commissioners to amend the future land use map category for five-seven-nine-zero Highway eighty-five at Riverdale, Georgia, three-zero-two-seven-four, from high-density residential to general commercial to allow the existing hotel to be a conforming use." Five-seven-nine-zero Highway eighty-five is known as Pembroke Townhomes with 38 residential units and one common era, area, and is depicted on a 2017 Revised As-Built Survey recorded on plaque book forty-three, page one-seventy-six. The subject property consists of 5.25 acres. It is located between Garden Walk Boulevard and Orr Road. The Board of Commissioners has approved the initiation resolution twenty-twenty-five dash two-zero-five on September sixteen, 2025. Staff recommendation is approval. ZAG recommendation was also approval. So, this is the bird's eye view of the subject property. And the next screen is the zoning property. Okay. So, if you look at the site, it looks like apartments. So, right now, we'll just discuss the change in the land use, which is from high-density residential to general commercial. And the next we'll get into.
The next one you're going to say. Okay. Thank you. All right. Is the applicant present? The Board of Commissioners, oh, so we just go on the vote? Okay. All right. So, at this time, I need, Commissioner Hamburg, what is your?
Yeah. Does anybody's in favor and anybody's opposed?
Oh, so this is just, so, all right. So, is there anyone that is in favor of this item? Okay.
Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, Unincorporated Rex, Georgia.
Can you all put 10 minutes up, please?
I need a little clarity here. This is an existing hotel that wants to expand. Am I understanding that correctly? Would, would somebody please answer?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I don't know if you can hear me.
All right. Now that I understand the situation clearly here.
No, no, I was saying, yes, I will answer, but no, no to your question. Yes, I will answer, but no to your question.
It is not a hotel wanting to expand?
It is a hotel. They're not looking to expand. They will remain as is. But we're changing the land use so that the hotel use can be in compliance with the zoning, the land use of the property. So, right now, we want to change the land use to commercial because that's what they're operating as, commercial.
So, they want to use that land to expand?
They're not looking to expand.
They want to use the property?
As is.
As is?
Yes.
To expand?
Mr. Garber.
Listen, here's what I want to say. Here's what I want to say here. If this is, if this is a commercial entity that is want to acquire more property to expand, I want you to know I'm in favor of it. Any further than that, that's all I want to know. Having high-density for homes, I'm against. But for a commercial use for a hotel, I'm for. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else who's in favor of this item?
Henry Anderson, District Three constituent and resident, Unincorporated Clayton County Hampton, Georgia. Madam Chairwoman, I ask that my question be answered as well, just like Mr. Mickey Garber, just for understanding purposes. A hotel is there. It was high-density residential. And you're wanting to change it to general commercial to satisfy the hotel being there? Is that, all right. What I want to know is, why was a hotel? If it's high-density residential, why was a hotel put there in the first place? Because if, it seems like that hotel should have never been done. Can that be answered, please? Because the hotel should, please. That is legitimate question. That's a legitimate question.
We're going to allow our attorney to answer that question.
Mr. Reed?
The purpose of public hearing is not to engage.
Then, go back and forth.
I mean, we made an exception for Mr. Garber, but this is to, if you are in favor.
So, if you're in favor, you just say whether you're in favor or you're used.
Okay, well, I'm going to say, okay, well, you know, you make an exception, but you know, but that's legitimate question. The hotel should not have been put there. But the hotel is there. So, procedurally wise, it's going to pass. But I'm going to say this. It should never have been put there. A violation has occurred. A violation has occurred.
Years ago.
Years ago.
But the violation has, has occurred. And it should be, for Madam Chairwoman, you say the three Cs, communication, collaboration, consistency. Communication, collaboration, consistency. By fairness, by fairness, there needs to be an explanation because you want confidence. You want us to give you acknowledgement of the great job you've done. But when situations like this happen, it should be explained. You are the commissioners and the chairwoman now. But for confidence, for confidence, it should be explained in the confidence to know that the mistake that was made will not happen again. That's it.
Thank you.
And we are in the process of zone rewrite.
All right. And so, and we can talk after the meeting. All right. Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else who is in favor of this item? All right. Is there anyone who is in opposition of this item? All right. So, we will move right along. All right. Commissioner Hamburg, what is your pleasure?
Yes, I would like to approve BOC two-five zero nine dash zero five six three.
I second the motion. Is there any discussion, any more discussion at this time, board members? Are you ready for the vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it and the motion passes. Next is public hearing, BOC two-five zero nine dash zero five six four.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Now, we're going into the rezoning of the property. This is a request to the Board of Commissioners to rezone five-seven-nine-zero Highway eighty-five, Riverdale, Georgia, three-zero-two-seven-four, from RM Multiple Family Residential to GB General Business to allow the existing hotel to be a conforming use. Five-seven-nine-zero Highway eighty-five is known as Pembroke Townhomes with 38 residential units and one common area. And it's depicted on the 2017 Revised As-Built Survey recorded on plaque book forty-three, page one-seventy-six. The subject property consists of 5.25 acres, located between Garden Walk Boulevard and Orr Road. The Board of Commissioners approved the initiation resolution twenty-twenty-five dash two-zero-five on September sixteenth, 2025. Staff recommendation is approval. ZAG recommendation was also approval. Again, this is the bird's eye view of the property. Next to it is the zoning map. This is what the property looks like today. And our, again, recommendation is to approve it to allow a conforming use.
At this time, is there anyone, you can set the clock, please? All right. Is there anyone here that is in favor of this item? Seeing none, is there anyone here in opposition of this item? Seeing none, Commissioner Hamburg, what is your pleasure?
Yes, Madam Chair. I would like to approve BOC dash two-five zero nine dash zero five six four.
I second the motion. Is there any more discussion at this time? Are you ready for the vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it and the motion passes. Next, public hearing, BOC twenty-five oh nine dash zero five six five.
The caption reads, "A request by Summit Design Build LLC for a conditional use permit for an attached accessory dwelling unit at three-zero-seven-one Lake Park Drive, Lake Spivey, Georgia, three-zero-two-three-six." The subject property consists of 1.53 acres. It is Zone ER, stands for Estate Residential Zoning District, further known as parcel number one-two-zero-one-zero-C-A zero-three-two, located near the intersection of Lake Park Drive and Pier One. Pier One. Staff recommendation is approval. ZAG recommendation was also approval. This is the subject property showing the zoning map as ER. The next is the land use of the property, which is Conservation Residential. This is how the property looks today. And the applicant is seeking to do an accessory dwelling unit for Eling in-laws. The in-laws will access the house through the main entrance of the house. So, there will not be a separate entrance to the home. They will have their own kitchen laundry area. However, it will be inside the home. So, because of that, the accessory kitchen, they will have to seek a conditional use permit. And that is what they're doing today. Staff has recommended approval and as well as ZAG has also recommended approval. And I believe the applicant is here.
Is the applicant present?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Board. Timothy Von Dell Jefferson, I'm here as a consultant for Summit Design Build. And my company is Faith Excel Economic Development Group, twenty-two-six-two-one Tamas Rose, Unit ninety-one, Love, Georgia, Georgia.
Mr. Jefferson, how much of the 10 minutes would you need to reserve for rebuttal?
I would like two minutes for rebuttal.
All right, two minutes.
On this particular unit, this is attached dwelling for the, for the seniors of this, that will be residing in this unit. This unit is approximately seven-eight-hundred square feet. The, the, the in-law suite is approximately eighteen-hundred square feet. We have since met with the commissioner and we sent, have since met with the community development to discuss the secondary kitchen. We have also addressed the concerns of the Lake Spivey HOA. And we have satisfied the needs. This property will never be for rent. So, that was the number one concern. So, we have cleared all of those up on November the third at the ZAG meeting. So, we asked, Gracie will ask for your approval on this matter. My client is here. If you would like to speak on anything further. Thank you. We greatly appreciate your appeal within this matter for the CUP on this particular location.
All right. Are you finished, Mr. Jefferson?
Yes.
Thank you so much. All right. Is there anyone here who is in favor of this item? Mr. Jefferson, you can have a seat.
Six minutes and?
I know, I was looking.
Six minutes. Forty-something on the clock?
Yeah, tell them six forty, about forty-two. Go back to six forty-two on the clock, please.
Are we ready?
Let them, let them say that first. I'll go. You can go.
Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, Unincorporated Rex, Georgia. Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the board, I, I want to make sure that I speak in favor of any home that wants to have take care of their elderly parents or, or people in a family, to keep the family together to, in a, in a home situation. I can't speak strongly enough about a situation like that, and I want you to know I'm greatly in favor of what this person is trying to do, and I hope you would approve his request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garber. Is there anyone else who's in favor of this item? Is there anyone that's in, you're in favor, sir? You want to come up?
My name's Charles Devonshire. I live at 2964 Lake Park Drive, only need two, three minutes here. Yes, I'm with the HOA, and I have met with the group, and I've met with the builder and everything else. We have approved it from the architectural side, that's not a problem. But what we're looking at, and our biggest concern has always been, and don't get me wrong, I agree with taking care of your elders. I'm all for that, no problem at all. It's just basically, when you look at it, look at the layout and everything, and once your in-law needs are not required anymore, we just don't want it to be turned, turned into a rental. I know it was stated, but we just like to see some sort of assurances associated to that. That's really where I'm at. I do have another letter here, basically, that I'd like to let you guys hear and review from another member of the committee that's not with us today. If you could, Officer.
Officer, can you? Thank you, thank you.
Is that address, but it's the same thing? So that's really where I stand right now. And just, you know, Lake Spivey is a nice location, we just don't want it to become a haven for rentals. I'm not saying it would be, but it's more of a concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that is in favor? Is there anyone that's in opposition of this item?
I'm in favor.
You want to come up?
I'm in favor. My mother died last year this time, and she, my father had been with her ever since she was sixteen.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, ma'am, can I get your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Tracy Morrow. My mom and dad have been married since they were sixteen and eighteen. My mom just died, and my dad's eighty-five years old. I have to fly to Seattle every month, you know, and to take care of my father, and if I would have had a, if I was living with him, or had a big enough house to where I can do a a father-in-law suite, I would have done it. I mean, they get so, they get lonely, you know what I mean? They, they, they need a little help, and to be bouncing back and forth from house to house, that's hard. So to have a, a suite made just for somebody, the ones that you love, that when they get old, I think that's special. So, I mean, if they, if he's, somebody's scared he's going to rent it out, I mean, if that's a stipulation, that, that shouldn't, I don't think it'd be a problem, but I think you should approve something like that. I think we should take care of our elderly's. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that is in favor of this item? I'm going to ask it one more time, is there anybody? All right, next, is there anyone else that's in opposition of this item? Is there anyone that is in opposition of this item? All right. All right, Commissioner Davis, what is your favor, what is your, what is your pleasure? Oh, he's still got time, I'm sorry, I'm about to move on. Sorry about that.
Yes, ma'am.
Please set the clock.
Please set the clock.
Two minutes, I believe, is what he.
Two minutes.
We set?
Yep.
All right, thank you. As you can see, on the, on the left-hand side of this facility is where the, the senior dwelling would be. This is attached to the primary house. Being attached to the primary's house is almost impossible for this to be a rent-on unit. There's no front entrance to this particular unit. Without going into further detail, God forbid, but the applicant have kids that are nine, ten years old, so after college, I think they would be residing back at the residence in this particular facility. So there will be no future plans to rent this facility at all. So we greatly appreciate your approval on this matter moving forward, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Commissioner Davis, what's your pleasure?
I do have a couple of questions, and for the applicant. For the applicant, address these.
Applicant, would you please come forward?
So this dwelling is for whom now?
It's for my father-in-law. I'm Brian Robinson, 2980 Bayview Drive.
Right.
District four.
Okay, and, I mean, hate to ask the question, but what happens when, there's no, there's no need for your father-in-law to be, or your father-in-law to.
It's actually for my father-in-law and mother-in-law, and I would expect one or both to live at least five to seven years. My plan's to be here at least eight to ten years. And again, like he had mentioned, I have younger children, eight and ten years old. They'll grow up in Clayton County, always have, and then will live on the lake and enjoy it.
Is there?
And I've built over nineteen homes on the lake, and I've never once turned one into a rental.
Is there a separate meter for this, this kitchen?
It's not separately metered, it's not separately gauged. There's a garage, there's an independent garage for it, but there's no front door, as Mr. Von Dell had said.
Okay. And granted, that area is very, very concerned with rentals. We've had a couple of issues with Airbnbs and rentals, and of course, that community is not thrilled with that. I just want to make the condition that, one, that it will not be a rental for a non-relative. And two, that it will never be subdivided for rent. And can we act, is that okay to condition that, Attorney Reed?
What was the first condition again?
Not, no rental. I guess, you know, your family's there, it's just not a rental, unless they giving up some money for it, but not a rental to anybody other than a family member. Or I should say, not a rental.
As a multifamily.
Correct.
As a single family, I should still reserve the right to rent it.
Correct, for your family.
Yes. Or if I moved out and wanted to rent it to a single-family homeowner, I could do that as well, it's just not there for two families, multifamily.
Yes.
I think, you know, multifamily rental would be appropriate.
The, well, opposite of that, only if multi, well, I'm sorry, yes, you're right. And what about, and the other condition is not be subdivided for rent.
Yes, that should be fine.
And you agree to those conditions?
I do.
Great. I move that we approve BOC 2509-0565 with the stated added conditions.
I second that motion. Is there any more discussion? You all can have a seat. Is there any more discussion at this time? Are you ready for the vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, this now ends our zoning meetings. At this time, Mr. Reed, do we have a need for executive session?
I'm sorry, yes, litigation only.
All right, at this time, I need a motion.
Personnel.
Litigation and personnel.
Personnel.
Okay.
It's okay. All right, at this time, I need a motion to go into executive session for litigation and personnel.
So moved.
All right, I second the motion. In the discussion at this time, are you ready for the vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. We will now go into executive session for litigation and personnel, thank you.
For the District Attorney's Office to increase the Deputy Chief Assistant four steps on the pay grade for LeCarian Blunt from pay grade thirty-four, step twenty-one, to pay grade thirty-four, step twenty-five, at a cost of $7,853.
All right, can I get a motion on the floor?
So moved.
All right, I second that motion. In the discussion at this time, are you ready for the vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion carries. Thank you. Next?
The second one is for the Veterans Court Coordinator for Lakeisha Dixon to increase her salary by $7,500 from a total including benefits of $98,960 to $108,656 at a cost to the general fund of $9,696. For the Veterans Court Coordinator.
All right, board members, what's your pleasure? A motion?
So moved.
All right. Can I get a second? I'll second the motion. Is there any other discussion at this time? Are you ready for the vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion carries.
Actually, Madam Chair, there was one item that I needed to add to the agenda. It's Resolution 2025-253, which is a resolution authorizing the county to establish hours of operation for the Clayton County landfill and its associated facilities during the Thanksgiving, Christmas, and New Year's holidays to authorize the chairwoman or her designated to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution to provide an effective date of this resolution for other purposes. And the reason why this is being added as emergency because it, the holiday hours will be before our next meeting.
All right, all right. I'll just say so moved. Can I get a second on that? In the discussion at this time, are you ready for the vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes.
All right, and then I have a settlement agreement in the settlement and agreement in the case of estate of Calvante Z. Banks Senior and Kiara McCowen individually, and is a legal guardian of Kalia McCowen, Calvante Z. Banks Junior and Kalnaya McCowen, on the one hand, in Clayton County, Georgia. On the other hand, and this is relating to two lawsuits involving the estate of that same, those same individuals versus Clayton County, Georgia, Cameron Pack, John Doe, one through five, and APC Corporation Civil Action File Number 2024 ZV006172 in the State Court of Clayton County, which was removed to United States District Court under that same, those same parties, Civil Action File Number 124ZV05710. This is involving a fatal accident on November 4, 2022. And the total amount of that is $700,000, which is a statutory maximum. And authorized the chief financial officer to amend the budget to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expenses required under the terms of the agreement.
All right.
What's the revenue source?
What's the revenue source?
The revenue source.
The general fund. This is, this is an auto accident, so there's no, there's no, uh, we have statutory liability for, for that.
All right, so moved. Can I get a second?
So is the motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Move to approve. So moved to approve.
Second.
All right. All right, is there any discussion at this time? Are you ready for the vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion carries.
That's all I have.
That's it. All right, at this time, board members, I need a motion to adjourn this meeting. Oh, you, hey, you come. I forgot about you.
Our board, in light of our recent retirement of Dennis Nelson from the warden's spot, we're asking that you appoint Deputy Warden Ray Amy as the interim warden effective November 22. You have his resume, you have his credentials to reflect his work. The actual salary, he's presently at pay grade thirty-two, thirty-one, at one thirty-five, two thirty-two, twenty-two, and he will go to grade thirty-six, step twenty-seven, $156,971, thirty-nine.
So what's, what's the difference in the date? Why? Oh, the dates different?
It's the beginning of the pay period, that's all.
But the warden left?
On the seventh.
On the seventh.
We didn't assign anybody during that period of time, because it's two deputy wardens.
But haven't we in the past made it retroactive?
When it was. When it was usually one individual, so if it's one assistant director, that by default would have become that person, then yes. But because there's two deputy wardens, and it's the, it's the pleasure of the board.
Let me ask this question, is this, I know he left, it was like a week before, I guess he had a weekend, so he left, was it on the seventh?
His last day was the seventh of November.
But his official retirement date is?
His last day was November seventh.
It was November seventh?
Yeah, he left prior to that.
Prior to November seventh, okay, that's what I was asking.
I mean, I would like for us to make it retro. Right, whatever date it was that the
So starting.
The warden, right, so that would have been, what, the eighth?
Yes.
So I guess that's what, retroactive?
So, so to amend the recommendation to, to move Deputy Warden Ray Amy to the actual interim warden effective November 8, retro into back to that date. And again, the base salary, he will go from one thirty-five, two thirty-two, twenty-two to pay grade thirty-six, step twenty-seven, $156,971, thirty-nine, effective November 8.
So how did we arrive at this? Hey, hold on.
That's based upon steps, based upon you going to the interim step.
So is that the same step that the warden had, or?
Yes, ma'am. It's, it's the same step that he would have come in as, as the entry. When you make the changes from an individual going from your, your present position to the interim director's position, based upon HR calculations, this is where the individual will end up.
So I move to approve Deputy Warden Amy for the interim deputy position, I mean, the interim warden position at this time.
Effective.
Effective November, when?
November 8.
November 8, not seventh, November 8. All right.
Second.
All right. In discussion at this time, are you ready for the vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Is there anything else? Mr. Reed?
Don't move.
See, oh, is there anything else? All right, at this time, I need a motion, board members, to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All right, in the discuss, y'all want to talk about anything else at this time? Are you ready for the vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and this meeting is adjourned as of 9:55 PM. Everyone have a wonderful rest of your night.